Good evening. Good evening, we're going to get started. Welcome to the Graytown Council Meeting of April 15th, 2025. This meeting is being held in-person and online. You can find the link to the online portal for Microsoft Teams in the Agenda header on our website. I'm going to begin with roll call. Councillor Gass.
Present.
Councillor Robinson.
Present.
Councillor Johnson.
Present.
And Councillor Chappell. And we're joined tonight by Town Manager Michael Foley, as well as, I think, many department heads in the back. I'm not going to name you all. Thank you for being here. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for unanimous, if anyone's opposed to unanimous consent for the minutes, does anyone have any edits?
No.
Anyone opposed to unanimous consent?
No.
Okay, so those are approved for April 1st, 2025. Next up is Council Communications to start, a report from the Council Chair. I don't, I don't have much to report other than to just continue to encourage people to participate in this process, which looks like everyone's here tonight to do that. That's great. And also just, we are accepting nominations, which Mike may mention later, for volunteer awards, which we hope to hand out in, at an event in May. So if anyone has nominations for a committee that's done exceptional work, or individuals, those can be found on our website, the nomination form. And then I will move to Council Communications. Mike, do you want, Mike Johnson, do you want to start us off?
Sure, yeah. For meetings, I haven't had any yet with the ZVA, but they do have one next week on 4/23 at 7:00 PM. Unfortunately, I will not be here, and I think Dan McGuire was my backup. If there's anybody in the council that could make it, that would be great. I don't know if any of you guys can.
What day is that again?
It's 4/23.
Possible.
And we can talk offline about this, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, thanks for raising.
I got a few emails from Scott Lowell about the budget, Alex Rogers about the zoning, Pam Edson more about the budget. And I didn't have a chance to respond to Pam, but I did get it this afternoon. And I think some other stuff that I've dealt with, Mike, that was inappropriate that I received, and we're taking care of that. But that's all I have for Communications.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Levi?
So I spoke to a couple residents regarding their concerns on the budget. Rec Committee had a meeting. They mentioned a couple grants they applied for that they expect to receive, which is the Community Connector Continuation Grant and the Courtesy Boat Inspection Grant for Wilkes Beach. There's also a free Easter egg hint coming up on April 19th, broken up by age groups. So, and you can register for that on GNG Rec's website, so.
Ann?
Open space at our meeting last week, we planned, they planned the booth materials for Gray Community Day, they're going to participate. The committee decided they, they wanted to support the warrant Article 13 that would transfer $500,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the land acquisition fund. And, and so this is a way that it doesn't raise new property taxes, and it uses existing funds for that purpose. And they also discussed possible zoning changes and agreed on a nomination for the Landowner of the Year Award, which is their, their purview. Resiliency has had two two-hour workshops with staff in the last, since this, since the council met last. Really a heroic effort in which everyone brought their best selves to the meeting and, and worked through their different opinions. And we, I think we started out, you know, pretty, pretty far apart, and it could have been acrimonious, honestly, but instead, they just kind of worked together and got the work done. So I'm really quite proud of all of them, all the staff, the volunteers and, and the Lake Association volunteers. We're still tweaking the language on that, but the council should expect to see a draft at a May council meeting, either the first or the second, not sure which yet. This isn't a land use ordinance, so it does not have to go through the planning board review, and it's a surface water protection ordinance is what it is. Our resilience fellow has produced the first video, including watersheds, and is beginning to work on the next, and submitted the required quarterly report for the community action grant on time, so that's great. Sea-Tac meets next week, and nothing new in the Village Transformation Project. One thing I did do was participate in the Joint Leaders Meeting last week. That was very, that's the Joint Leaders, is the, the, you know, leaders of Gray and New Gloucester, as well as the school board. I thought that was a very useful and enjoyable and interesting meeting. A lot of useful information was shared. And I guess we'll continue to try and do that. Thanks for Mike, to Michael for pulling that together. In correspondence, I had notes from two large landowners regarding property tax assessments of their parcels. And I had some, one email and two calls about the proposed budget and several in-person conversations.
Thanks, Ann. For correspondence, I also had a couple emails related to the budget and another email from a resident concerned about the zoning changes that are being proposed. That's all I had for Communications regarding that. In terms of council committees, I also attended the Joint Leaders Meeting last week. I agree, those are really useful conversations, which we typically do quarterly, but there was some discussion about potentially doing them more and also adding space on our respective agendas for updates from the school district in particular. So I think that that will be useful going forward. The Greater Portland Council of Governments Executive Committee met this afternoon where we did a performance evaluation for the executive director and discussed priorities for the next year. And the Blueberry Festival Committee will be, Wild Blueberry Festival Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning at 9:30, which unfortunately I won't be able to attend due to my professional responsibilities outside of the council, but I am sure I'll get an update from them. The Ordinance Advisory Committee, not sure when we're meeting next, but hopefully in the next few weeks to discuss the pending zoning. That's all I have, so I will move to the town managers to report.
Awesome, thank you, Krista. This past week I had, or last week, we had the table talk with the town manager. We had some residents that attended and discussed various things in the community, and it was great to have some of those conversations. Hope to have others attend. Just a reminder, this includes, is on the first Monday of the month at noon time, currently at Two Moms Kitchen. We're working on potentially adjusting location and time in the next month or so, after we've done it a little bit there, so we hope others will want to attend. But just a reminder, if anybody would like to meet with me, to talk to me about any issues or any matters, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm willing to adjust my schedule, be flexible to whatever's necessary in order to try to meet with people. We also have some open positions I want to remind everyone about. We have some positions at, with recycling and solid waste at the transfer station. We have open positions in firefighter EMTs, and then we have some open positions at the library that we're working to fill. So check out our website for those hiring opportunities. Just want to remind everyone about the budget review schedule that has happened. We had a number of sessions, Public Input Session back in February, delivered and had a number of budget workshops through the month of March. And then we had a first reading of the, and public hearing on the draft budget warrants at our last meeting on April 1st. And then today is final approval of the budget warrants. And we have the referendum town meeting on June 10th, which is Election Day, in addition to some other municipal positions that are up for election, as well as a school budget validation referendum. So I hope to have as many people as possible participate in those remaining-ish things. Wanted to let everyone know, last number of meetings ago, I had reported about the International City Managed Association Senior Fellowship Program in partnership with the US Army. Unfortunately, that program is canceled due to some of the challenges within the federal government right now. That may be rescheduled, and I'll keep everybody posted if and when we're able to host somebody here in Gray from the US Army. Wanted to provide a few general updates for everyone. Just a reminder about our digital newsletter. Hope everyone has signed up for that. If you haven't, please check out our website to sign up for that. Also a reminder about the volunteer awards. We're hoping to have those nominations in by the end of the month, so the council can consider those at our next meeting. So hoping to get those in, so just a reminder to do that. And the department reports are included in everyone's packets. If anyone has any questions about those, please don't hesitate to ask me. There's also fiscal year '25 financial reports that are included in that packet as well. We have about, based on that information, we have about 25% of our budget remaining, so we're, we're right on track to finish out the fiscal year. And then I wanted to let everyone know about the Whitney Road Tire Dump, which was a property that the town had come into tax-acquired status a number of years ago. We finally are able to start getting that property cleaned up. The, through our Brownfields Grant that the town received a number of years ago, there's contractors that started last week, and that property is being cleaned up, so that we can, as part of the Brownfields Program, conduct some soil testing to see what the, the status of those soils are. So it, I've been working that for as long as I've been here, and finally able to get some progress on there. So excited to report on that. Also, this last, or this past week, or the end of last week, we received a draft fiscal year '23 audit that our finance staffers are reviewing, that we hope to, hopefully have presented publicly by our audit firm next month. And, and then I just want to let everyone know, legal counsel we've been working with for a number of years, Jensen Baird, has decided to close down their municipal practice. And they had a very large municipal practice that operated for many, many years. Number of attorneys have left, and the remaining attorneys that we work with have moved, will be moving to Drummond Woodsom. And so we'll be making that move with those attorneys, just to have a seamless transition, since we have a lot of active things going on. The, the price isn't much more, but we'll be able to, to manage that within, within our budget that we have. And that's all I had for general updates. And when we do get to the unfinished business of the town meeting warrant articles, I have a presentation on some budget updates.
Okay, great, thanks, Mike. Okay, so next up is public comments of non-agenda items. We will have some time set aside for agenda items for public comment, which will be limited to three minutes, since they are not a formal public hearing. But this is an opportunity for anyone to comment on non-agenda items, so the public's invited to address the council for three minutes on non-agenda items. Does anyone have anything they'd like to address? Is there anyone online?
There's nobody online.
Okay, so I will close a public comment of non-agenda items at 7:13 PM. And so we will move on to old business and the second and final reading of the FY26 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. I'm going to entertain a motion, then allow public comment, again, limited to three minutes per person, and then the council can address comments and questions after the public comment period, so.
May I be able to present the budget changes?
Yes, yeah.
After the motion?
Yeah, we'll have that, yeah. So I'm just looking for a motion for the Gray Town Council to hereby approve the municipal warrant articles for the annual town meeting to be held on June 10th, 2025. And just a point of information, we have to make a motion to approve in order to have a conversation, just part of Robert's rules, but we are not voting on that yet until after we've had comments and discussion.
So moved, second.
All right, moved by Ann, second by Levi. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike to go over his highlights.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have some budget updates that I included in the packet and as part of the warrants that I wanted to share for the council's consideration this evening. And so we've been able to make some adjustments throughout the process, of which I'll explain, but these are the final budget figures that we've come up with. So for the administration, the total proposal for fiscal year '26, warrant article for fiscal year '26 is $4,490, which is a difference of $262,629 from fiscal year '25, which is a reduction of 5.5%. Library and Recreation is a total budget of $988,000, which is an increase of $49,652, which is 5.3%. Public Safety, which includes the fire department and law enforcement, the, for fiscal year '26, it's $2,558,000, which is a difference of $382,097, which is 17.6% increase. Public Works, which includes the Public Works Department as we know it, recycling and solid waste, and facilities and parks. This is a total budget of $4,509,000, which is a difference of $387,225, or a 9.4% increase. And then Debt Service, which in prior years was included in CIP, is, a total is $1,430,000, which is a reduction in $177,103, or a 14.5% reduction. And then for capital improvements, this, I proposed to make an adjustment here and fund $0 for capital improvements to be raised in the budget as part of the warrant articles, and I'll explain that further down. But that brings a total municipal budget of $13,588,000, which is $184,989, or a 1.4 increase in last year. Here's a brief chart that shows how the budget breaks down for municipal departments. Administration and Public Works encompass 33% of the municipal department. Public Safety comes in at 19%, and with Debt Service at 8%, and Library and Recreation at 7%. With this, we calculate our final estimated budget. So with the differences I just explained, the municipal budget is increased by $184,989. There are no changes to TIF. I haven't received any updated figures from the school department for the budget that they have voted on, so those aren't included here. And then the county budget does come in for fiscal year '26 at $1,35,797, a $59,862 increase, or 6.13%. Without the school, any changes in the school, this is currently a total increase in spending of $244,000, approximately $245,000, which is just under 1% increase in spending without the school information. For non-property tax revenues for the municipality, those have come in at $7,421,687,687, which is $155,723 increase over last year, which is a change of 2.14% increase in non-property tax revenues. This all shakes This all shakes out to calculate final estimated tax needs. So for the municipal budget, the total tax needs is $6,166,313, or $275,098 less than last year, or a 4.27% reduction. Again, no changes to the school that I am aware of. And with that, it shows a total net needs of tax being reduced right now by $215,235, which is about a 1% reduction in tax needs. And so this all calculates down into an estimated tax rate, and the only information I'm able to provide is the municipal portion right now and the county. So the municipal tax rate last year was $2.94, and this year it's forecasted to be $2.79, which is a 15-cent reduction in the actual tax rate for municipal services, or a 5.09% reduction. With the county tax increase of, from 45 cents to 47 cents, that's a 2-cent increase, which brings a total tax rate reduction of 13 cents, which, to the average homeowner in Gray, which has an assessed valued home at $476,000, this would be a $61.88 reduction in their property tax bill to support municipal and county budgets, or a 1.31% reduction. And so we had revisited a number of items that we discussed here. The law enforcement, we created a separate warrant question that is included and revised based on some feedback at the last meeting, where we've broken down more information on the warrant articles, so that people can understand what those cost breakdowns are. So the final adjustments that we made from the budget that I originally proposed back in March is a total of $210,754 in actual reductions from what I proposed. And how we accomplished that was a hundred, about $100,000 in revised wages, taxes, benefits, and legal under the administration portion of the budget. Library and Recreation has a reduction of $3,615, which are some revised wages in those budgets, and an increase for books that the council had requested. And then in Public Safety, it's a reduction of $33,484, which is a revised wages for vacancies. We've filled some, or adjusted some positions that we had vacant, on estimated, the pay rate that they may come in at, and that's why we're able to adjust some of those wages. Public Works, a reduction in $25,740, and that's also, again, some revised wages. And we also filled some vacancies during this time, and those positions had slightly different wages than we had estimated. And then I, I'm proposing to reduce the capital expenses of $47,000 that I had originally proposed. And we plan to use existing, and existing capital reserve funds and the new capital reserve fund that we're proposing to be added as part of the warrant articles. And then we made some adjustments in revenue of about $34,000, which are revised figures in ambulance billing, and then reductions in excise tax. And the reductions in excise tax are due to the, that imposed tariffs that are going to be coming in on vehicles, which we anticipate will hinder the purchase of new vehicles, which ultimately contributes to the excise tax rates that we receive here in the town. So we, we wanted to try to be more conservative in those areas to help ensure that we, those come in closer to budget. And so with that, here's just a, a plan with the revised capital projects. This was a similar sheet that I shared early on in the budget workshop, workshop process. So we will just, the, the middle column, which is the fiscal year '26 capital fund, goes to zero. And so we have the borrowing that's proposed of $1,990,000 to support capital projects, and then $72,000, which will be used for, used with existing reserve funds, and then $10,000 will be using some grant funds to support the Plaimo Vent relocation. We had a few, a little bit of money remaining in the American Rescue Plan Act funds for public safety that we're able to allocate between that and existing budget funds to support that project. So we still are investing in capital as part of this budget. We're just not going to actually raise taxes or raise money to support capital in an effort to help lower the, the tax rate. And so we've, where have we come from? We, the proposed budget that I proposed back in March decreased the municipal portion of the tax rate by 4 cents. Now we're proposing to reduce that by 15 cents. And we did that with the spending adjustments that I just outlined, as well as absorb the budget growth with cuts and growth in revenues. We also reduced the tax rate, the, reduced the tax rate results in continued stabilization here in the tax rate for the town of Gray, where it's kind of varied over the years. And then we, again, we have the separate question regarding law enforcement. And then we have the adjusted wages. And the wage study that the council had asked me to complete from our last meeting, which was included in the packet, and I sent councils some updated information that I had been able to gather from Standish that the council has. But I have some selected positions that I want to talk about, the wages and how they impact and compare to other communities. I want to let you know the communities that I proposed to, to study, which include Gray, North Yarmouth, Cumberland, Yarmouth, Falmouth, Wyndham, New Gloucester, and Standish. Those communities are all abutting communities or close communities in size and proximity, which have an average population of 9,672, and they're all just Cumberland County towns. And this graph just shows their populations in comparison. So most of them we're close to. Wyndham is a brief outlier, but they are an abutting town. So one of the, the wage study that I conducted for library circulation assistance, just to show where we're coming from, in fiscal year '25, our average hourly wage was 1961. I'm not proposing to raise the average hourly wage of 1961, but we did establish a scale. What's recognized, will recognize years of service and help with retention. In Cumberland, the rate is $25 an hour. In Yarmouth, it's $29 an hour. In New Gloucester, it's $20.69 an hour, the average hourly wage for library circulation assistance. So as you can see, generally, we're in the market. We're below the more affluent communities like Cumberland and Yarmouth. And that's a, that's a statistic you'll see with all these positions as I go through them. The next one is administrative assistants and assistant clerks. In fiscal year '25, we were at, the average hourly rate was 2289, and the new hourly wage is 2352. You'll see that some of our neighboring communities are much higher, with North Yarmouth at $30.88, Wyndham at $27.27, New Gloucester at $34.17, and Standish at $27.45. So we're not getting to those neighboring communities, but we're increasing it to try to be competitive. But you can see, we're in the market of neighboring communities. And not every community that I studied is identified, because I wasn't able to secure data for those specific positions. And at the end, I'll explain my data source and some variances that may apply in that situation. So facilities technicians, which is like, we call them facilities laborers here. In Gray, the, the rate, the wage was, average wage was $24.95. For fiscal year '25, in fiscal year '26, we're proposing the average raise to be 25.66. North Yarmouth's coming in at 23.15, Yarmouth 28.76, Falmouth 26.65, Wyndham 28.70, New Gloucester 24.21, and Standish at 25.32. So you'll see these wages are generally in the market, but still slightly below some of the, what we would consider more affluent communities. Transfer station attendant, in fiscal year '26, we're, our fiscal year '25, our wage, average wage was $21.96 an hour. We're proposing to bring those up to 25.66 an hour, primarily to compete with our neighbor, New Gloucester, that paid $25.75 an hour. Yarmouth, Falmouth, and Standish don't quite have the same transfer station operation that we do, and don't handle things in the same way as our employees do. They're, they're doing a lot more hands-on. We've actually processed recycling here, and Gray, where all the other communities simply collect all the recycling in a single, single stream and ship it to a recycling sorting facility. So we're in the market if we're comparing our neighbor in New Gloucester to be able to attract people to do what I would consider very difficult work for the community. And then Public Works, our CDL operators that operate plow trucks, dump trucks. You'll see in fiscal year '25, our, our, our wage was pretty much off the scale at 25.11 an hour. The proposed fiscal year '26 is 27.80 an hour for that wage. And again, we've created the scale. That's kind of the, the, one of the positions I've talked about, where everybody made 20, the average wage of 25.11 an hour. And we have people that have been there a year, from people that have been there 30 years. So we're trying to recognize that. But as you can see, North Yarmouth, 26.42, Yarmouth 27.56, Falmouth 28.55, Wyndham 29.55, New Gloucester 26.78, Standish 26.60. And I put on this one, private contractors or private haulers. An example would be like Shaw Brothers or Gorm Sand and Gravel, or locally Grover. A lot of them charge like an average wage, or they pay an average wage of $29 an hour. So we're, that's who we're kind of competing with, but we are slightly lower, and we're, and we're slightly lower than some of our more affluent communities. Firefighter EMTs, I just wanted to show it as it's a, it's a big part of our budget. The council supported the collective bargaining agreement for the firefighters in, in the fall of last year. But you'll can see the average wage, and we have like three different licensure levels for fire departments, so I took an average of all those. In fiscal year '25, our average wage was 24.50. And fiscal year '26, our average wage will be 28.54. As you can see, North Yarmouth at 31.50, Cumberland at 30, Yarmouth at 26.95, Falmouth 32.17, and Wyndham at 27.77. We're in the market for these, but again, lower than some of our neighboring communities. The deputy town clerk, which is a position that has been brought up publicly at previous meetings. In fiscal year '25, we budgeted $53,820 for that. This is a salaried position. So for fiscal year '26, we're budgeting 55.756. And then you'll see the average, average salary for other communities in North Yarmouth, 55.261, Yarmouth 63.62, Falmouth 71.490, Wyndham 62.538, New Gloucester 57.352, and Standish 69.105. Some of those positions have varying responsibilities in those communities, and why some of them have discrepancies. But as you can see, we're, we're pretty much in the market for that position, and again, a little lower than some of the more affluent communities. So the next group of positions was town clerk, recreation director, facilities director, and public works director. The average salaries for those in fiscal year '25 was $82,691, proposing the average salary for these positions to be $88,731. And these are all in the wage group together, in the wage scale that I, that I shared with you as well, that I proposed. And so for North Yarmouth, the average wage for those positions is $92,513. Cumberland, it's 111.705, Yarmouth, it's 101.449, Falmouth 105.805, Wyndham 103.830, and Standish 94.459. So as you can see, we're in the market, but we're still slightly below a lot of these other communities on these positions. So I'm not trying to make us the top, or even make us, you know, close to the top, just trying to, to help us be more competitive. And then for the positions of assessor, HR director, finance director, and fire chief, those are all grouped in the same wage scale that I prepared. The average salary in fiscal year '25 was $91,375. In fiscal year '26, the average salary is $97,283. So in Cumberland, the average salary is 131, almost 132. Yarmouth, 114, Falmouth, 132, Wyndham, 117, New Gloucester, 88, and in Standish, almost 117. So as you can see, for those positions, we're still kind of in the market, but lower than, than some of our more affluent communities, which is a continued theme. And then the library director, which is one of the positions that has been talked about publicly as well. That, in fiscal year '25, that position was at $89,638. For fiscal year '26, we're proposing it to be 105.520, based on the established scale. In Cumberland, the library director is 117.333, Yarmouth, 95 and 14, Wyndham 81.305, and New Gloucester is 47.664. And then the average, I put this one because libraries are kind of compared across different communities. So statewide, for populations of 8,000 to 12,000, the average library director is at $82,077. So as you can see, this one is about in the market as well. Some of our other communities are a little bit higher. We have a, an experienced library director that has many, many years of service, both here and in libraries in general, so they are higher on the scale than, than others might be with lesser experience. And then the last one, coenforcement and planning, which is a new position, because it's a combined director position for those, for that newly combined department, as well as the economic development director position. The average salaries for those, they're in the same wage scale. Our, this is a new position, so I don't have a fiscal year. These are both new positions, I don't have fiscal year '25 information. So this year, the average salary is 97.283. Cumberland, the average salary is 125. Yarmouth, it's 89. Falmouth, it's 109. Wyndham, it's 108. And Standish is 106. So we still are kind of within the market on this position, slightly below some of the other communities. And so I wanted to just mention my sources. So every year, MMA attempts to gather salary information through the MMA Salary Survey. And I got the 2024 MMA Wage Study, which, communities that provided that data would have provided it at the beginning of fiscal year '25. So in the summer of 2024, those information would have provided. I also got information for Falmouth and Wyndham from their collective bargaining agreements that either were provided directly to me from the town, or on their website. I received the, the wage information directly from our neighbors in North Yarmouth and New Gloucester. They filled out a spreadsheet that I sent to them. Cumberland, Yarmouth, Raymond, Standish did not respond with requests for that information, so I had to get a lot of that information from their website. And Wyndham, there was a number of things available that I was able to sort through on their website to give the, the wage information. And then Standish, I took most of the information from their fiscal year '26 budget presentation that the town manager had proposed, which has a number of changes. And so that's all I had for information to present this evening. So happy to answer any questions the council may have directly for me before you take any other questions or comments.
Anyone like to comment or have a question?
I don't know, does I have any questions right now?
I guess my only question is, is that when you did this, did you look at hours? Did you look at benefits? Did you look at, yeah, tenure?
I didn't look at benefits, because I don't have that information for each community. I simply looked at wages. I didn't, the council hadn't requested that I get that in-depth to, to comparison, so I provided wages. The MMA Salary Survey doesn't have that. I know that some of these communities may have updated wages as part of new budgets, or they may have, positions may have changed and things of that nature. Many of these communities didn't have a scale like we have or proposed, but they, they thought it was a great idea, and they were considering doing a scale. Wyndham was one community that had a scale, where they had a range for many positions, and that's how we got the averages. And so I didn't compare that. As far as hours are concerned, every one of our salaried employees, I know there's a lot of talk that we don't work 40 hours. Every one of our salaried employees, I can assure you, nearly works 40 hours every single week. The hourly employees who work here at the Pennell Town Office Complex, they may only work 36 hours, plus or minus a few hours here and there. Sometimes some of them stay late. But hourly wage that I compared, it's an hourly wage. So I'm not gonna, I can't augment the hourly wage because they work at Wyndham a 37 and a half hour work week, or they work a 40 in, in Cumberland, or something like that. So there wasn't necessarily a place to, to, that I would have augmented the wages or changed the factor because of the hours that, that we worked.
I don't have any questions, and I'll reserve my comments till the end, but thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That's really thorough. Okay, so I will open it up now for public comments. Again, I would just ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes, because this is not a formal hearing. But if you have any comments about the budget, I just ask that you come up to the podium, so people at home can hear. State your name and address for the record. Would anyone like to make a comment?
About the budget?
Yes, this is all exclusively about the budget.
Judy Semino, Arlington Court. My only comment about the budget is, is I'm just disappointed that you didn't make more changes than $200,000. I was hoping for a million and a half. I hope voters out there turn that budget down, so it can be corrected. So I think it's very over budget, and I hope the voters get out and vote, and vote no.
I'm, I'm sorry, could, what, just, could you just clarify? You're, you're concerned we didn't make changes on what, again? I mean, I just missed.
The total budget.
The total budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Yep, come on up.
Dan McGuire, Johnson Road. Kind of going off that conversation a little bit. I think the, appreciate the effort that Michael went through. It was kind of late in the game to try and gather the information. I think this is a good start. I think adding some of the communities a little further to the west, thinking about, and to the north, thinking about where we draw employees from, is important, as far as, you know, getting a good idea of where Gray sits in that pool of, of communities where we would attract employees from. But the other issues I just wanted to touch base on, one was the undesignated fund balance. There's been conversation about how that's been larger than it needs to be. Some of that, I think, is a result of the ish, financial issues we've had in the years past. The community has voted on, and the council has approved money to be set aside for different things that was never done properly. I think that can explain some of the reason why that number is bigger than it is. I also think Michael's done a much better job of calculating what we're likely to receive in revenue, where I think past administrations were very, very conservative about that. So we ended up bringing in more money on a regular basis than we had budgeted because of that. And I couldn't find your slides in the packet. Are they the ones that you presented tonight? Are they in the packet?
They weren't in the packet, but the data that I shared was the adjusted budgets, the adjusted warrant articles, and the wage study.
Are you gonna, is there a way to get ahold of your, your slides from tonight?
Yeah, we'll get them posted on the budget page on our website.
Great, thanks. And I guess that's really it. I think my concern, again, it'll be interesting to see with the audit. I was really glad to hear that that's, you've got a draft of that. It'll be really good for the community and everybody involved, for us to get back in track as far as the audits are concerned. But I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, please come up.
Yeah, Gary Foster, Weymouth Road. You know, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting due to a virus, but, you know, it appears that you have made some adjustments, and I appreciate that. But here comes the but. We've, you know, we've raised the bar last year to the tune of like 47% compared to fiscal year 24. And making some minor adjustments might look good. It's kind of like a, a store increasing their prices 50% and then having a 20% off sale. So, you know, it looks, looks good on paper, but we still have people struggling to buy groceries, struggling to pay taxes. And I appreciate that the taxes haven't been affected that much, because we're, you know, we're using other sources of revenue, including undesignated fund balance. But at, at some point, when that undesignated fund balance is at the minimum and we can't use it, those taxes are gonna hit hard, and I would just ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Pam Edson from 95 Yarmouth Road. I just want to make one comment, Mike, because you, Mike, Mike Johnson asked you while you were standing here, if, when you did those salary surveys from the other towns, if you did take into consideration hours worked, hours open, and different variables. And my recollection is of the last meeting that Levi did ask you to take into consideration those variables when you were doing this. I do want to make one comment that I noticed with the main purse, that we now have three employees that are getting main purse, that are not part of the public safety. I know that you did that with the public safety people, because you were trying to fill positions, but I notice now that it's moved into the town office. And I was looking at the cost on a spreadsheet this week, and I noticed that for one particular person, that it was, their retirement, their regular retirement, what it cost us last year was, I think, $5,563. And for Main Purse this year, it's gonna cost us $10,400. So I can see that there are three potentially that are looking to do the pension plan with Main Purse. And I'm just wondering, going forward with this, I mean, that's almost double the cost of what they're paying for their Mission Square retirement now. So I'm just wondering how you're gonna prepare for that in the future, if the whole town decides they want to move to Main Purse. I mean, that's a huge, huge uptick in our budget. And as far as watching this tonight, you know, I do appreciate that Mike, you know, made an attempt to make some cuts. We didn't get to see how these salaries really look now. But, I mean, it's a start, I guess. But I, I don't feel like this budget is something I'm going to personally support, and I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Bob Coleman, Valley High Road in Gray. I just want to make one quick comment, I guess, in response to Counselor Robinson's comments last meeting about the importance of debt service. And if I could summarize those comments, the idea is that debt is okay, that it's a good thing, because it spreads the payment, if you will, of capital across many budget cycles. And I certainly agree with that conceptually, that spreading the expense of a capital expenditure over a larger debt cycle makes sense. But I just wanted to mention that there are better ways to do that. There's a thing called a sinking fund. It's a, an accounting way of pre-funding capital. And in fact, I think we do that in a few areas. In fact, the proposed $500,000 donation to the land fund is an example of that. It's setting aside money for future capital expenditures. And I would submit that that's a much better way of managing our overall capital expenses by pre-funding them. I, I will say this, I greatly support designating funds for these future things, because if we don't designate them, then they're general fund, undesignated fund balance, and we, as we're seeing this year, we tap that whenever we can. I'd much prefer to have designated funds for future capital expenses. But my point is, let's fund them ahead of time and not pay the interest, and i.e. gain interest, turn it around. So I think we can do that. I know we do that in a lot of areas, and I just recommend that we do that in general, moving forward. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any online. Last call. All right, I'm gonna close public comment regarding the budget warrants at 7:46 PM. So I'm gonna open it up just for counselors to have a conversation, ask questions. Mike, would you mind, because since we're voting on the warrants, would you mind going over what cha- what language changes have occurred in the warrants?
Yes.
In the packet? I know that in law enforcement, one is in more detail, as you noted. But other than that, the capital reserve, I believe you mentioned also.
So it's on, begins on packet page 27, I'm sorry, 26. And so the, the only changes that I've made is in the amounts. So Article 3, it differs from what I presented earlier because the law enforcement one is handled separately.
Yeah.
As well as the town council stipends is handled separately. So this is proposing to raise $13,466,500. And the amounts that I put here reflect the changes that were made, that we've made since the beginning of the budget process, the reductions or additions that were made, which have that total cost. And then the total cost for the town council stipends is actually in the administration portion of the budget, but that's taken out of that number, because it's voted on separately. And then the same thing for Article 5, which is the law enforcement. And so it says, the law enforcement question, it says, "Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate an additional $111,000 for contract law enforcement services with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office to increase dedicated patrol as recommended by the town council? We added the breakdown, which shows salary and benefits costs of $60,000, operational costs of $4,000, and capital costs of $119,000." And those are one-time expenses to start. There is a vehicle replacement schedule around five, six, maybe seven years, which I plan to start using the method suggested of establishing reserve funds to save for those replacement cruisers in the future. So we have budgeted separately, where I had planned to start setting aside money for the cruisers of $72,000. So we have that budgeted, so that reduces the, the total increased cost of the law enforcement, which is the, which equals the 111,000. And then we added a note that says, "The town currently has dedicated law enforcement patrol Wednesday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM. This proposal would add dedicated patrol Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, beginning January 1st, 2026. And should this be approved and continued as part of fiscal year ending 2027, the estimated annual cost is approximately $131,018, with added capital costs needed in five years." So the capital costs will kind of, in next year's budget, help cover the increased cost for the full year. So it won't be essentially the whole, the whole cost of the 111 doubling. The other thing that I wanted to mention that the council had asked about was the potential for a different schedule because of the overlap. And per the Sheriff's Department Collective Bargaining Agreement, they have specific schedules that they work.
Okay.
That they bid, and things of that nature. So they're not able to adjust the schedule to, so we had, those are the schedules that we have to work with. They have, they have this, a schedule of, there are 10-hour shifts, I think, at 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM to, to 2:00 AM. And then there's another shift that they have of 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then, then they have the middle shift of the 11:00 AM to, to 9:00 PM. So there's varied schedules to cover like a day. But it does create some overlap on Wednesday, as you identified, which will help us in making it possible for us to do more traffic enforcement by having two deputies will be able to do that. And then it'll make an opportunity for training, where we won't suffer on a day if the, if a deputy needs to do training. And I did mention, the Sheriff's Department's pursuing a grant for a K9, a law enforcement dog, to work in the community, to have available, preferably a lab, which is a, a dog that can be used for tracking and sniffing activities. So those, those, that could potentially be available, included as part of our, as part of this new position. They like to have dogs spread out throughout the county that are supporting law enforcement in the county as a whole. So they thought that would be of value to pursue, and we, and we don't have a, a minimal cost that they can work in if, if we have to. And then the only other changes are the, based on what we, there hasn't been any changes based on what we talked about. Counselor Gass and I talked about some changes that I think she's gonna propose, some language changes as, as a couple other articles. Otherwise, everything else is pretty much the same as it had been in the past.
Okay, so the capital reductions you made?
Oh, yes, that's eliminated. I apologize.
Oh, okay.
That article, I forget what the old article number was. Does anyone know off the top of their head?
No, that's okay.
The, the old article, which was an article to raise money for capital costs, is, was eliminated.
Okay.
Based on those, those, the $47,000 of capital costs that I talked about.
But there is still a warrant, which has not changed, to set aside a million dollars in the capital reserve fund.
Yes.
That's Article 12.
Yeah, that's Article 12. And that...
Which will fund future capital costs.
Yeah, it authorizes the transfer and appropriates those funds for those, for those uses.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's what I thought had changed, but I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, I apologize for not mentioning that.
No, no, thank you.
And in terms of Article 12, there's, Michael's added a, a note that just says this warrant article...
Here's, hand these out.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. You can, I, you'll see, the language is in red here. Under Article 12, he added a note that says, "This warrant article will not increase property taxes and simply uses existing financial reserves the town has as part of the unrestricted fund balance." So the numbers aren't changed in that, it's just that note is added. And then Article 13, which is the land acquisition reserve fund, when Open Space met last week, they suggested that we add that the, on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 line down, where it says, you know, part of the sentence that says, "It, it's necessary to achieve the open space in Gray Village Development Goals identified in the town's comprehensive plan." And after comprehensive plan, there's a comma, and Michael has added in our request, "Open space plan," and the Gray Village Master Plan, it continues as, as before. So that just, it's really just adding open space plan, and with an additional note that is identical to the one above it under Article 12 that was added, that the warrant article will not increase property taxes and simply uses existing financial reserves the town has as part of the unrestricted fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
So in, in that case, hers are proposals, so we have motion to amend with...
Okay, oh, these are your proposals?
They're, they're, yeah, they're Counselor Gass's proposal.
All right. I mean, I think that is help, a helpful clarifying notes for both of those. Would Levi or, Michael, do you have any opposition to these amendments for the notes?
Should, should I make a formal motion to amend at this point? Yeah.
Um, maybe, let's save that to the end, in case we don't amend anything else. So I just want to note, thank you for taking a lot of our feedback, but also feedback we heard last time we met, and making some adjustments to salary, salaries and other budget items that you outlined for us, Mike. Also, thank you for doing all the work related to recording the salary assessments you did. I thought that was very helpful. Just a couple notes. The overall tax commitment, as you noted, Mike, is going down by over 4%. And the mill rate for the municipal portion also would be going down by over 5%. There, there is an increase, as you noted, in expenses, but the revenues increasing and the overlay reduction offset that very small increase in expenses by, by quite a bit. So folks are not wrong that the budget is increasing slightly by a little over 1%, which is a very competitive...
Conservative.
Conservative adjustment, just based on what I've heard from other municipalities. But overall, tax bills will be going down for the municipal portion of the budget. I want to come back to the comment that was made about main purs. Maybe you can expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, definitely.
But I'm gonna come back to that. We are using the suggestion for what was referred to as sinking funds. We do have capital reserve, we've done that in the past. We are gonna continue to do it, hopefully, if that's approved. And we do have designated funds for those purposes for some funds, but I believe that the audit is helping us clarify what those designated funds are from the past and going forward.
Yeah, so the fiscal year 23 audit won't clear up all those. We're gonna work to clear up those over fiscal year 24 audit and fiscal year 25. But that's, we're trying to get through the budget, and then I'll have a report at some point, which outlines all of which designated funds that should exist. So everybody will know, there's money set aside for skate park, there's money set aside for open space, you know, there's money set aside for different things, and facilities reserves. So...
Yeah.
That we'll have a, an accounting of that, that we'll be able to present at a later date.
That's great. I mean, I think we're all eagerly awaiting that detail, so I appreciate.
I would like to know it all as well.
Yeah. And so I just want to comment on the staff, staff wage adjustments. Generally, we need to be aware of who we're competing with. We are a member, we are a member, a community member in the county of Cumberland, which is a highly competitive town for wages, or, excuse me, a highly competitive county. And I think, Mike, you've done a good job of pulling out like towns that have like qualities, such as Standish and North Yarmouth. And even, and even Yarmouth, which I know that they are... And even, and even Yarmouth, which I know that they are a wealthier town, but they are like size and therefore competitive in our labor pool. I did like the suggestion of potentially going forward, also including some of our neighbors to the north, just since we potentially would pull labor from that area. But I think with what we're working for, for this budget, it makes a lot of sense. North, New Gloucester and Raymond, I know that a lot of folks in town feel like those are our like towns since they're our neighbors and they don't have as much commercial real estate similar to Gray. But they are not a like-size community. They're significantly less population. New Gloucester has 5,700 people approximately. We're a town of going on almost 9,000 people, so our growth is much larger. And lastly, some folks have noted that we had competitive wage adjustments a couple of years ago, which is true. But if you look at these numbers and who, and who we're competing with for the labor pool, we are still not competitive unless we make these increases. So I just want to make that note. And I know other councilors have some thoughts they'd like to share. Anyone else comment? Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I mean, as I was going through this and looking at what's happening nationally and in the state, it occurred to me that there's an argument to be made that this budget is too low. And I know that's not going to make people in this room happy, but think about it. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty because of the tariffs. And the tariffs are driving costs up. We don't know exactly how that's going to land over the course of the coming year, which costs will go up and which won't. But I, you know, I, I'm very concerned about that personally. I, I think there's also a lot of uncertainty because of the, the effort at the state level to create, to pass up people's veto, to prevent the budget that was passed at the end of March, the state budget, from going into effect July 1, and instead allowing people to vote on it at the November 3 election. If that happens, you know, that has the potential of costing the town quite a lot of money due to changes in not just municipal revenue sharing, but also state aid to education. And we don't know how that's going to play out. We won't know until the end of June. So I, I certainly wouldn't be a supporter of reducing this. I'm not going to propose a reduction in the budget, you'll be glad to know. But I, I am feeling like I don't want to reduce this budget anymore. And the other thing I would just note is that, you know, I've heard a lot of chatter over the last several months especially, that, you know, like, well, you know, we're, people aren't on board with Gray growing. Well, I, I just want to point out that if we did nothing, if we changed not one zoning ordinance relating to land use, this town would grow. It is growing. It has been growing. I checked with code enforcement and Gray added well over 200 units in the last five years, over 60 in the last year, in 2024 alone. And assuming two people per household, which is probably conservative because some of those households had, had children, you know, that's at least, you know, over 400 more people, possibly more. You know, a town that's bigger needs, you know, there are more people, need more services. And, and that's one of the things that's driving the budget. You know, costs are going up for salaries and for all the other things that the town has to, has to purchase. So, I mean, it, it, you know, it, we're going to continue to grow. And, and it will happen whether or not we change zoning ordinances because we can't simply just, you know, shut down growth. We could on a short-term basis with a moratorium, but we'd have to have a purpose in mind. And, and eventually that would have to be opened up. And Maine is 30,000 units short of housing, which is one of the things that's contributing to our, our housing crisis and, and the soaring costs of housing. And so it's not a great idea to stop building more housing. And, and Gray will continue to kind of do its share. And finally, I'll just note that, I mean, I've been, you know, I've been on the council for my fifth year. My experience is that reasonable people can disagree about strategies, right? I mean, to bond or not to bond, you know? Some people are big, you know, very much in favor of bonding, others think it's a bad idea. You know, you know, which towns should be included in a salary study? That's a matter of, of, you know, some discussion, debate. And it's not, you know, it's, it's not a, you know, there's no malfeasance in, if, if the town decides to go in one direction or another on that. It's simply a matter of disagreement. And I, we do really appreciate the input that we've heard on the budget. And you can see that, that we've tried to respond to that. But I, I think that I'm very comfortable with this budget.
Thanks, Ann. Levi?
So just to respond to the, the sinking fund or designated funds, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to that, and you can certainly do things that way. But you, it does require planning in order to be able to do that. You can't just start from, you know, scratch and do that. And I doubt it's feasible really for all of our capital means. So you could do pieces of it, but you really have to set aside a significant amount kind of year in, year out. And ultimately, that's going to come from the taxpayer in order to achieve the outcome that you kind of want it to. So you could do it that way, certainly, but you can't just start out of nowhere when we have immediate needs. That's the kind of thing that would, would hold you back. But I would, like I said, I wouldn't be opposed to that kind of proactive thinking if that's something that the residents are in favor of. Next, to kind of address the hope of shaving more off, I look at '25's budget as kind of the benchmark comparison when we're now in '26. And, you know, I don't think there's any way really to shave off, you know, a million and a half or whatever amount you want to use without really going backwards as an employer, rolling back services in some capacity just due to the economic environment we're in at this point. I mean, you've kind of seen from the wage perspective, each municipality has kind of had these increases COLA-wise that have been some communities sizable. I've seen effort 7% for the coming year for one of the surrounding communities. So that's kind of been each municipality, each popping up a higher, higher number. And then the competition has just driven up that much faster in recent memory. So I think that's part of the thing that you're fighting against, you know, as a municipality now, trying to make sure that we keep our staff. And I didn't expect necessarily the, the wage study to be turned around so quickly. So I do appreciate, you know, how quickly that was done. I still feel like, you know, that baseline hour comparison is an important piece of it, whether it's 36, 40, 70, 37 and a half at bare minimum as a conversation point. But ultimately, you know, the budget as a whole, it's, it's clearly, there's not a huge increase on the expense side. It's mostly offset by revenues. The only piece that isn't is 30,000, and that's municipal only. So it's hard for me to really go against the budget, knowing that's where things stand.
Mike?
Thank you. I've tried to take into consideration all the phone calls, the emails, and the people that I run to, and just try to put it together real quick here. This is just a few key suggestions from people that I've talked to. First, regarding the salary adjustment. Really, most people are more comfortable with a step program. You know, I recommend implementing a program specifically, let's allocate a 5% increase to employees who have exceeded expectations. This would be a starting point. And we can, you know, we can plan for additional 5% increase next year to bring the salaries in line if that's what you're worried about with the target. This would also give us the opportunity to really conduct a fair comparison with what Levi just mentioned a minute ago, making sure that these numbers that you have don't include benefits, wages, all that stuff combined. I do have concern that the numbers aren't, you know, totally accurate. And I'm not saying that they weren't done right. I just want to go back and look at it. And also want to mention that the fact that the national average this year was 3%. And given someone an 11% rage, raise, you know, a couple have gotten them year after year. You know, as, you know, Ann said, it's, you know, the market, you know, we could be looking at some really tough times. And I think raising salaries that quickly is not good, and it's not what the people have, have asked me. You know, with the sheriff's question, I, I do think that we should leave it as a warrant. You know, one of the things that someone suggested to me was that actually have the start date be for July 1 and give the full cost for that first year. And they'd feel a lot more comfortable with that. They don't like it starting halfway through the year because they don't feel like they get the full benefit of what it's going, how it's going to affect that budget year after year. When it comes to the real estate question, you know, I, I think that's really, you know, I don't have the right answer. I don't know what to say to people. The only thing we could do is, you know, you know, a few suggestions is remove it entirely from the budget or maybe reduce it to half. That way, we're not touching some of the monies that are there. The borrowing strategy, I, I do like the suggestion. You know, I suggest we consider rewriting the bonds that, that, that we need to. I did get a phone call this afternoon that had some questions in regards to those bonds. You know, what is the present rate of, what are we paying today? What would be refinancing them? What would be the rate that we receive versus the money, the interest that we're, that we're getting in our balance today? And then the last thing I had really was the, the transfer station. Again, people didn't feel like hiring somebody to check tags was a great idea. They, you know, would prefer that we, you know, we sent those out with their taxes. And for me, my biggest concern is that if we don't find common ground, you know, and make these compromises, the town budget will not pass. That we, you know, you guys, the town employees that are all here tonight, have put considerable time in and effort into these budgets. And we really need to focus on our normal day-to-day duties moving forward. You know, if this doesn't pass, it, it could, you know, it can create a lot of havoc. You know, there, there is definitely a new board coming in. And I want to make sure that we get, as this board, done what we need to do and let them worry about the next thing, next year. And if this doesn't pass, then it's going to move to that, to that new section. You know, I, I appreciate you guys listening. And hopefully, I've gotten everyone's concerns addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Just, I want to circle back to a couple of questions that Mike could help us answer. What, I think Mike just alluded to, Michael Johnson just alluded to this. So what on average are the salary increases for staff? And is there a COLA separate from that?
So there is no COLA. So basically, just to explain where I, I worked to build the wage scale. The wage scale that I shared with you guys doesn't have any names, doesn't have any people. I looked at positions, I looked at how they're grouped, I looked at wages in other communities. Even though I hadn't done a documented study, I did research before I created the, the plan that I did. And so I created that, that scale. And as part of the tool ClearGov that we have, it has an incredible tool where I can plug that scale in. And then we entered each individual employee and their years of experience based on information we have from their applications and resumes and personnel files, some of which are different. I'll mention, I'll mention that some employees have already come to me and said they actually have more experience than, than they, than we had identified because they hadn't, they had been here so long and they didn't provide old experience and things of that nature. And so we've, we'll, we'll make some of those adjustments and we'll be making some of those adjustments into the fiscal year as well. But this was our best guess. And what that, what the system did was automatically calculate. So I didn't go through and, and calculate the increase of each individual person. I'd say the ranges are between 3 and maybe 15%, depending on the positions and depending on where they rate and where they are adjusted in that market. Some of them, again, I, I pointed out, if we had a much lesser experienced workforce, the increases wouldn't have been as much because they have, they are higher up on the scale because we have people that are, you know, 27 years versus one year. The benefit to that is when those people retire and we hire someone with less experience, they'll, we'll save money in the budget because people will retire and will hire someone with less experience. And that, that will ultimately reduce things in the budget. So I would say, like I said, 3 to 15% to directly answer your question. But I just want to preface that I didn't take into consideration the person or the people when I developed that wage scale. I simply made a scale based on research of information to try to recognize longevity, knowing that it wasn't crazily outside of the, the market conditions and wasn't negatively affecting people in different ways. And so I, I tried to do that. Some positions are grouped different ways in there, and those may need to be adjusted over the years if we're not as competitive in individual positions. But this is a, I recognize this is a difficult transition year. And I wouldn't have proposed these changes if, if the circumstances were different and we were looking at major cuts and major tax increases. And to help accomplish this, I eliminated two positions of pay and benefits that totaled about $250,000. That if I brought forth a status quo budget that maintained all the employees that we had had before, gave them a standard COLA of 3 to 5%, depending on what's going on, the budget would actually be more than it currently is as proposed. And if the budget doesn't pass, that we'll, we'll have to operate under our previous budget, which is more than the budget that we proposed. So that's definitely a challenge in that sense. But that's kind of to answer your question.
All right, yeah, thank you. I know that it's fairly complicated. But I just want to, you know, Mike Johnson has just proposed doing like a step program, a 5% now and then an additional 5%, 5% based on performance, and then 5% additional next year. But it sounds like, and this was my understanding before, so I just want to state it, that because we've used this wage scale, we really can't implement that across the board because your changes were not in an across-the-board percentage. Is that correct?
Yeah, they weren't necessarily. And performance-based wages are not very common in the municipal workforce.
Okay. That's news to me, but that's good to know.
So a lot of times what they'll do is, a budget will be proposed, like, next year, I'm not going to propose changes like this. I'll propose a standard cost-of-living adjustment. I'm not going to propose any performance enhancements.
But we would maintain these, the scales, so that we can be more accurately reflecting people's work experience and performance. Okay, so I'm going to come back to that just because, Mike, you had a specific proposal, but I'll, I'll come back to it in a sec. There was also a question about the increases for the Maine PERS retirement, since we are now offering both the Mission Square, kind of like standard type 401K, it's not a 401K, standard 401K offer versus some employees can now, outside of public safety, choose to participate in the state retirement program. So can you speak a little bit to like any increases that we're seeing for that? That might be, have, folks have questions?
Yeah, definitely. So I, the town council, as I prepared, approved the personnel policy changes a number of weeks ago.
Yep.
And it's something we had worked on almost as far as this time last year. And I had proposed that from the beginning to offer the Maine PERS. That's a recruitment and retention tool to keep employees here in addition to some of the other things that we've done. Most municipalities in Maine offer the Maine PERS retirement system. It's Maine Public Employees Retirement System. And so most of them offer that. And we, the town of Gray, has not offered that, other than the recent change for the firefighters. And so the town council supported including that as part of the personnel policy. We're just unveiling that, those changes in the personnel policy. And Maine PERS requires us to have, come to the council and adopt the, the plan, the plan amendments. And so we'll be doing that in the months ahead. But right now, we're estimating a change to offer that plan as of August 1. And we'd hope to be July 1, but from a timing perspective, August 1 will work better. And so I've discussed with a handful of employees who've told me that they would participate in the Maine PERS program. So I included those in the budget, and that's why people can see that. But right now, under the, the ICMA plan, which is a 457, similar to the private sector 401K, employees can contribute between 0 and 9% depending on their level of, or their years of service to the town. And so very different employees pick what their range is, and the town will match whatever they contribute. So if they contribute 6%, the town will match 6. If they contribute 9%, the town, town will match 9. And so we, that plan that's in place, people pick different things. So there may be increases if an employee told me that they were contributing, they were doing Maine PERS and they want to do the, they were doing the 457 and they want to do the Maine PERS. You know, they could have been, maybe only been contributing 3% or only 4%. But so the costs associated with Maine PERS, the employer cost is 10.2%. So again, it is slightly higher than the max that will match. But again, it's a recruitment tool to, to bring experienced employees for vacant positions or to keep experienced employees. And then the employer contribution, or I'm sorry, the employee contribution that people have to, to pay is about almost 8%. So they have to contribute 8%, and then the town contributes that. So it's not an equal, but it's a completely different plan than the 457. It's a defined benefit plan and has different varied factors. And so that changes year to year, what the, depending on what the fund is at. And so, for instance, in fiscal- And so, for instance, in fiscal year '24, the town would have contributed 10.2% for the regular plan with regular employees. In, for fiscal year '25, it was 9.9, so it went down because of the fund might have had enough resources. And then it's, for fiscal year '26, it's going back up to 10.2.
Okay. Thank you for just clarifying that for people listening. So I know, Ann, you said you don't want to make any changes. I, I had been contemplating doing something, proposing something similar to what you did, Mike, about doing a step change, but it sounds like with this wage scale, that would be, we can't really do those across-the-board adjustments. So I'm comfortable, especially since Mike has made reductions since we last met, which were significant, that I'm comfortable with the budget as is. So that's where I'm at. Do either of you want to weigh in on any of the potential changes on salary or the warrant articles as written?
So I, my only question, well, not my only question, but, so given the reductions now, are you comfortable with where we're at, given that it's not squeezed too tight?
I don't think so. We, like I said, I made adjustments in positions that we filled and had different wages, and that adjusted, you know, the benefits, the taxes, things like that. That's why we've seen a lot of those adjustments. And then I'm confident that we'll have the resources for the capital to be able to use our reserve funds that we already have to support those capital projects. And so the tweaks that we've made and the reduction in legal expenses, you know, I think that those are right sizing. And again, some of those accounts were accounts that were existed before I came here. For instance, the legal, we just combined all the legal, they used to have separate legal accounts and all kinds of different budgets, which is a nightmare in charging it to different budgets, so that's why we combined it to one. And I think it was in excess of $80,000 prior to my arrival. And so it was, it was brought down to 80 as part of last year, and then we don't use a ton of it because we manage those and we try to use MMA legal, which I talked about when MMA was here. And so I'm comfortable reducing that to a lower amount. And so I think, I think the, the budget is continuing to be right-sized. There's places that, you know, maybe we can cut more. If the council wanted to propose to cut wages, you know, I can try to estimate those numbers. I don't have those calculations today, so those would be something to make. But again, the wages, I think, I'm just trying to provide a professional recommendation that continues to maintain staff in the town and keep us competitive in the workforce. If that's not the desire of the council or the, or the public, I'm happy to make those adjustments if they like. But I, I think you've charged me with providing a professional recommendation on the budget, and I think original, the original budget was, and I think some of the adjustments that we've made are all things that we can live with.
Right. But, but just to answer Levi's question, you made reductions. Do you feel like it's too tight of a squeeze?
No, I think we can live with the reductions that we made. Yes.
And then the only other thing I'd follow up with, obviously, because there's been a lot of discussions about those individual positions and kind of where they're, they're grouping, and I just don't think this is kind of, I appreciate Lisa saying that there could be some adjustment there in the future for those particular positions, because I can certainly see, you know, some of the arguments behind where they fell, but I just don't think this is the right venue for that or to hold up the budget because of it. So I just wanted to mention that as a.
Right. So you're talking about there are certain ranges, and we've identified specific positions in, in each range. And Mike, you mentioned earlier that those adjust, those could be made, made adjustments. But, yeah, that's a fair point, Levi. Are you comfortable with the current warrant language and also the allocation for staff wages as, as proposed?
I think so. I think at least in terms of not holding up the budget, I think I'm as comfortable as I'm going to be for that.
Right. Mike, do you want to weigh in?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Yeah, I think, Mike, I think it was you who said, it was, that we would, we ultimately would like this budget to pass. I think the added expense of having to revise this again over the summer and hold a separate town meeting, which is bad for morale and also staff time commitments, and there's an expense there with added staff responsibilities that's, and then are not focused on other things we're trying to accomplish. I, I agree, it's important that this passes, and I, and I appreciate the changes that have been made since the last meeting. So like Ann said, some of us are going to agree on strategies, some of us are not going to agree, and ultimately, that's your decision at the voting booth. But I'm hoping the community can get behind the work that we've identified as a priority for the town through the planning efforts we've done within community engagement over the years. And Mike and his department heads have done really a good job of executing those strategies with a responsible budget, especially compared to our surrounding towns that are feeling larger impacts. So I'm comfortable moving forward with the warrant language as noted, although there were these two amendments that Ann proposed, so we would have to amend those if we were moving forward. Sounds like three of us are okay with it. Mike, you're not?
Nope.
But, so, Ann, are you okay with revising? Who made the motion? I forgot to write it down.
I did, I think.
You did. So are you okay with your suggested revisions?
Yeah, my proposed revisions, yes.
Yeah. And then Levi, I believe you seconded. Are you okay with these amendments?
That's fine.
Okay. So I will go to vote. And again, we're voting. The language is, be ordered the Gray Town Council hereby approves the municipal warrant articles for the annual town meeting to be held on June 10th, 2025, as amended. And I will go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
And I am a yes. So we will move forward with these warrant articles at the June 10th referendum. And I will move on to new business. Up next, we're looking for a motion to approve the mobile vendor license renewal for Lonnie Humphrey doing business as Lonnie Dogs.
So moved?
Um, I'll give, okay, give it to Ann and Levi second.
I just want to move things along.
I just want to thank Lonnie for continuing to operate in town. I know he's someone who's well-respected in town, and everyone really loves his delicious hot dogs, so I'm happy to have him return for another year. Does anyone else want to make a comment?
No.
Okay, I will. Does anyone in the audience, would they like to make a comment on Lonnie Dog's mobile vendor license? No? Okay. I'll go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And also a yes. Okay, and I, next up is appointments and election officials, appointment of election officials, looking for a motion.
Ordinance advisory.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Looking for a motion to appoint Adam Wilkinson as a regular member of the ordinance advisory committee with a term expiring on August 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Levi?
I'll second.
Ann, second. I just want to thank Adam for volunteering. I am the liaison for that committee currently, and we're doing a lot of really valuable work, and I know that he's a respected member of the community and has a small business in town, so I think he's well-versed in what ordinance impacts and zoning changes would mean for the town. So I'm happy to have him join the committee. Any other comments? No? Okay, I'll go to vote. Mike?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, and I failed to open it for public comment for that, so I'll allow, if anyone would like to make a comment on Adam Wilkinson's appointment, you're welcome to do that. Nope? Okay, closed, closed public comment. Looking for a motion for the Gray Town Council to hereby appoint the proposed names of election officials for the town meeting to be held on June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
I'll second.
Ann, second. What packet page are those on?
That's packet page 52.
52, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to read them. So, thank you to all these volunteers for their time and energy on Election Day. Volunteers noted are Lacey Antonson, Kayla Girdsall, Corey Girdsall, Belinda Carter, Tracy Greenwood, Sarah Kramlich, Deborah Ladue, Lisa Lena Gilmore, Melinda Sheehy, Barbara Steiner, David Whitney, Barbara Wood, Georgia Woodbury, and Claire Zimmerman. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment on these appointments for election official? No? Okay, so I'll go to vote. Mike?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. And that is it for our business, but we do have a second public comment period. If anyone would like to come up and make a comment on any of the agenda items or just a general comment, you're welcome to do so at this time. You could just state your name and residence.
On the cost, 145 Norishore Road. Question for you, Mike. What is the average increase, the cost of living? Like, what you, earlier you were saying, like, 3 to 5% or something? For citizens, just for people? Yeah. I'm just curious, so like, if, if the cost of living increases like 4% and we're increasing our budget by 1%, I'm all for that. I think that's good. In fact, I worry, are we cheating somebody? Because it seems to me that's usually the struggle. I mean, I'm just a simple guy, and I look for simple solutions, and I look at that, and I'm like, okay, next. So I just want to point out, to me, 1% is not a big deal. That's, we're looking good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did some research on that today. The Consumer Price Index, the latest figures for the Northeast region was 3.4%, I believe. So yes, 1%, 1, not, under 1 and 1/2% increase is definitely meeting, exceeding that. Any other comments?
Judy Semenow, we're not just increasing by 1 and 1/2% or 1%. We are borrowing money, and so that lowers that. So you're not right in thinking it's a 1% increase. It's more like 10 to 12. And we're over, and we're on a budget, we're comparing it to last year's budget that was over as well. So we're not comparing it of a 1% increase or 1 and 1/2. It's way larger than that. We're borrowing 1.9 million. We're taking 1 million from our cash reserves, so it is clearly far above that. So you're being misled.
Just a response to that. The part of the borrowing that's being done this year is actually refinancing money that we've already borrowed, so it's not an additional 1.9 million. It's, what was the original amount was 1 million, the original amount was 1 million for that bond, which we're refinancing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit under a million for the cost for the two new trucks, which we kind of talked about, that replacement schedule. Unfortunately, we were set up in that when a number of vehicles were replaced in large amount in 2018, and then the, the replacement of gas tanks at Public Works and the Stillwater improvements that are, that are included in those, it's just under a million dollars.
Right, but then the other 1 million is refinancing a private bond. At a better interest rate.
Yes. But ultimately, the, the total debt for the municipality is declining as part of that, and will continue to decline in the years ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have a question, Mike. What is the rate that it's at now? Because that's a question I couldn't answer. What's the rate that it's at now? What's the rate that we're going to get for that refinance piece?
The interest rate?
Yes.
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I can bring it up, but the, the rate was a little over 5% that it was financed at before for five years, and the average rate that we're going to go to is about 3 and 1/2% over 10 years. And it results in a total interest savings of about $20,000, but extends the term for 10 years.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, that doesn't, so we're almost, how much, how many more years do we have left to pay on that?
Four years, and it was for about a 40-year improvement. So it should have really been financed for a longer period of time, and we're simply just extending it to 10 years versus refinancing it to 20 years because the interest rate would be higher for 20 years, and we would pay more interest over time.
Yeah, but are we going to pay more interest over time because even though it's only 3 and 1/2%, we're now paying it for an extra six years versus paying it, you know?
It's a total interest savings of $20,000 that I mentioned.
I want to just go back to public comment, Mike.
I'm sorry, yep.
That's okay. Any other comments? Yeah.
Derek Foster, Weymouth Road. I just wanted to comment on the capital funds, capital reserves versus bonding. They both have their place, actually. When I was on the council, we, we looked at bonding for the first time. But for, if we're planning on a purchase one year, maybe two years out, a capital fund is the way to do it. But if you're going to make a purchase 10 years out, using $20, $25 to make 2035 purchase doesn't work when you factor in inflation, so just, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks, yes.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any online. I will close our second round of public comments at 8:33 PM. There's no new council referrals, but there are some old ones here, which we are actively working on. Our next meeting date is May 6, 2025, and we do not have an executive session this evening. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at 8:33 PM. So Michael, Levi second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yep, all right. Have a good night, everyone.